This is a city council work session, Monday, May 11th, 2020, 4:30 in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. This will be working for the May 18th City Council meeting. Again, on your screen, or if you're listening in, for public access to this meeting, it's Meeting number 791-645-725. Let's get right at it. On the proposed regular agenda, first up is public hearing for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 919 North 8th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland, when you're ready. Sorry, I'm rushing you.
This is a property we acquired through the abandoned building program. It is one that can be rehabbed, so it still is staining. We've had a lot of vacant lots recently, a lot of properties that had to be demolished. This is one we felt could be rehabbed and have received a bid on it. So we, I guess we'll see if we get other bids, but we have a bid for $500 from a father and son group looking to rehab the property. Does need work, like most of our homes, clean out, siding repair, plumbing electrical upgrades, drywall patch repair, floor replacement. As with all our homes, they have to be rehabbed to minimum housing standards, meet all our conditions prior to any occupancy. Can't buy it, move in and fix it up as you go is required to meet all those requirements prior to any occupancy of the structure, so.
All right. Council, do you have any questions for Eric on that one? While you're up here, number two is public hearing for consideration of the sale of property, property locally known as 1006 Elm Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
It's a small property. May look familiar. We did sell this previously to someone that hadn't gone through the process before and just failed to do anything with it. A year and a half prior, we did notify them and have received another bid from Mr. Don Harder to rehab the property. He's been very successful in other properties, so feel confident that this one won't come back if he were to get it or someone else that's done projects like this before. So does still need quite a bit of work. Again, cleanup and removal of items, siding repair, plumbing electrical upgrades, drywall patch, floor replacement, kitchen and bath repairs. So do have a bid of $500 from Don Harder at this time.
Okay.
I have a quick question, then. Did we let the other people that bid on it before? Was that the runner-up? Or did we give them the opportunity?
No, once we saw it, we go through that. It's been a year and a half timeframe.
It's just like we're starting over.
Yep.
All right. So both those will be May 18th. If you're watching, come down and buy yourself a place and make a nice new home. Number three is a public hearing for consideration of an application for Housing Sustainability Grant for the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Program, CB or CDBG. That's what you always hear us say.
So this is a grant where we applied for previously, applied for last year. We're not successful, but are looking to apply again. Iowa Economic Development Authority has kind of revamped some of their CDBG housing programs. So there's different categories of programs. We're looking to apply for the exterior home improvement program that addresses roofing, siding, windows, things visible from the street. They want projects that can be completed within, I guess, a very somewhat quick timeframe. So they're doing smaller projects, usually five or six homes at the most, and then something that you can see the changes with. In the past, it's a grant of $24,999 per home. If you got into quite a bit of work, you had to do it, and if it exceeded that amount, then the homeowner had to come up with it. So it was a difficult program, where now it's focused more on the siding windows trim. For this grant, that feels a little more manageable under that grant amount. There are other funds available for lead rehab and then administration. So looking to apply for $238,000 for five or six homes in this area. We did have to go through the pre-qualification process, so we had six or seven that are interested and do qualify in this area right now. If we're awarded funds, we'll go through those first, and then if any are dropout, then we move on to others. But looking to hopefully be successful with this. There is no local match for this, so that's a good thing. But looking to apply, I think it's June or July 1st is applications due, so.
Okay. And so if you have, how many homes do you think you can do with that?
Potentially five or six at the most.
Okay, so if you have seven or eight, you'll just have to go through a winnowing process?
Yeah, and we did a lot of outreach last year for this, because this was the same neighborhood we applied for, and since we went through that with a lot of those homeowners, we reached back out to them again first and do have still interest in this area.
All right.
Some of the, I guess, benefits of it, looking at the sewer separation project in this area, that's seen as city investment in the area, so hopefully that'll make our application strong as well, and then being near Grimes Elementary and some of those other areas in there.
Outstanding. Anybody have any questions for Eric on this one?
No. All right. Thank you, Eric.
One thing I failed to note, within this, so Sarah with Regional Planning Commission will be going through, there's some requirements, listing out the income guidelines and then different things, so she'll have to call in and go through a list of things just to meet the CDBG requirements. And then they had to do a kind of abbreviated housing needs review or assessment. So our planning commission met April 21st and went through that. So you'll see attached to this in the housing needs assessment, that's not a thorough going through and seeing what the actual market is, it's kind of a cursory review by staff and by our planning commission to see what are some needs, and obviously, better quality housing at all income levels is something that we need, but that was something that needed to be with the application, so you'll see that as an attachment, just so you know what that is.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Eric. Number four is a public hearing, consideration of the 2019-2020 Budget Amendment Number One. Stephanie?
So in your packet was the resolution of the budget amendment. It was published in the paper in the Hawkeye on March, or sorry, May 6th, so we'll have the hearing next week. Basically, just there's another sheet, kind of just listing why we're increasing the different line items. We did do the refunding on two bonds, so that's where that $10 million. We're increasing the revenues by $10 million, and also, the debt service function is being increased by that amount, because we received those funds in, we'll have to expend them June 1st, and that refunding was not budgeted. So then, also revenues coming in, we have a transfer for the land purchase we're going to do, so that's, that was not budgeted either. On the expenditure side, public safety, we're increasing about a half a million dollars. There's the payment that we need to make to the, for the GMT revenue that we get for the ambulance, we have to pay out a certain percentage. If you have questions, Matt would be able to answer that. And then for the revenue that we're going to get in, and that was not budgeted, we also had some police expenses, building expenses, overtime and training and supplies that we need to increase, and then the building code, public safety function, we're increasing technical services, which we're going to be able to do some demos that were unbudgeted. Under public works function, we're increasing it by $120,000. About half of that is the airport capital contribution that increased from what we originally had budgeted, so I got that in there, and then we had a little bit more for consulting and engineering overtime. Capital projects, that's a large one, $3.7 million. All the flood expenses we've had this past year, those, of course, were unbudgeted. The Tiger Grant also, that's about, I think, a million, a million and a half that we've spent this year. That was not in the budget this year, even though we knew, you know, it was a capital project that was going to occur. It was one of those, until the ball stalled rolling, we didn't, you know. When we did this budget a year and a half ago, it wasn't in there. So that's what kind of makes up that TEMA building refund, too, that was over, you know, about $700,000. That was money we had to take in and pay back out, and again, it was unbudgeted, so. Under the culture and rec function, there's some library trust accounts that, you know, that's money that we hold. Sometimes we don't know exactly how much we're going to spend in a year, we kind of make an estimate, so we're just increasing that a little bit also. And then under business type function, we went over a little bit on a solid waste vehicle, so by $75,000. So that's what makes up, again, it looks like we're only increasing the revenues by $10 million, but the expenses by $14 million. Most of that is in capital projects, where we have the funds in, you know, the money is there, just wasn't in the budget line item, so it's not like we're, you know, going in the hole by this amount. We had the bonded funds for the Tiger Grant, and we're getting the Tiger Grant funds in, it's just, so that's, it kind of looked a little lopsided, but if anybody has any questions?
Questions? I don't think so. Explained it very well, thank you. Number five, public hearing for consideration of plans and specifications for the 2020 Seal Coat Streets Project. Nick?
Good evening. Eric, could you throw that map up for me? This is the public hearing for the plans and specifications for our Seal Coat project that we do on an annual basis. So Seal Coat is a, is a rock emulsion, essentially what we go in and do with the process is we go in and reclaim the, the surface and the base underneath, and then we put a new layer of rock and oil on top of it. In the past, we had used limestone rock. Kind of when I got here about four years ago, we switched over to a pea gravel, a crushed pea gravel to give the edge, and it seems to cause less dust, and hopefully it holds up over time. But this is a map overhead that shows the, the roadways that we are going to try and tackle with this street project. It is, it's a fair number of different roads. Last year, if you remember, we did, we did only a couple of roads, but it was longer stretches. We have estimated project costs at $390,000. We budget annually for about $400,000 that we use road use tax funds to be able to do this project. So I can answer any questions. It's, seems like a relatively easy project, but I know there's a lot more that goes into it.
Does anybody have any thoughts or questions?
Did we get an email about somebody asking about Denmark Street? Do I remember that? Was it Dunham?
Dunham.
Dunham.
So the segment of Dunham that the gentleman was referring to was the two blocks just east of Summer. Dunham was actually in the 2017 Seal Coat project, but the two blocks east of Summer are actually concrete base with an asphalt lift. To go in there and reclaim, that wouldn't, wouldn't work. So it's, it's a little bit different of a process for that. We would have to mill it up and put an asphalt surface.
It'd be an overlay, wouldn't it?
It could be an overlay, part of an overlay project.
Do you have any other work going on that's?
Central Avenue is, is going to start up sometime in July, is from the word that we've got from Norris. They're currently completing their facilities out by Lake Geode. They're building a brand-new facility that can put out a lot of asphalt, so they're, they're waiting to kind of do Central until later, which gives us a little bit of time on our locust separation. We, we did come in about $100,000 under the estimate for that project. However, all those monies play in conjunction with the next two projects that I'm talking about, and then the closeout of a couple others. So there is the possibility that we have a little bit of funding left over that we could, we could add some quantity and talk to the contractor about adding some work on. I don't know that Dunham would be the one that I would recommend us doing. We are tackling Harrison Street next year, and our likely candidate for a detour will be Barrett, and Barrett is in pretty bad shape in the blocks east of Summer. So I don't know that you'd want to necessarily do an asphalt project in front of a big detoured concrete project, but to put those cars on that street right now would be pretty bad. So I guess we have to wait and see on, to answer your question on that, and that's kind of what I responded to the gentleman, was that we have some available funding that's out there, it's just where does it best fit in trying to repair a couple of blocks, you know, if you only have $50,000, that maybe that makes sense, but if we have a larger sum, it might make sense to tackle some of the, a bigger section.
In the meantime, you're patching what you can?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any, any other thoughts or comments on that? Okay. Thank you, Nick. Moving on, Nick, you're up with the next couple. Public hearing, consideration of plans and specs for the 2019 ADA Ramp Improvement Project, and you want to do the 2020 ADA at the same time?
I will talk about them together. It's, so the reason for the distinction, if you remember last fall, we, or late last summer, we went out to bid to do ADA work associated with the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, which you can see is the red boxes up on Mount Pleasant Street. In order to comply with the federal grant that we got, we had to make things ADA compliant. So we restricted the, the project area, but we had to tell the DOT that we would take care of the issues there. We went out to bid, and we had one bidder, and the estimate was at $70,000, and our bid was well over $100,000. So at the time, we elected to not award bid, and so that's the distinction why we kept it the same year, project name, so that way we could go back out to bid. And you, you will notice that we do have a couple of other spot ADA project. I don't think at the time, maybe I had the best map, but now you can see we have a, we have an issue down on West Avenue, and then we have some stuff off of Barrett, actually. So, so what, most of these ADA projects, the, the Mount Pleasant Street part of it is a little bit different, because there's a longer stretch. And then moving into the, kind of the next topic, the 2020 ADA project, is all up in the North Hill area where we just redid a bunch of asphalt work. So when we put in a, where we mill and then put up a two-inch, two-inch lift of asphalt, we change the height elevation where the truncated dome panels meet the roadway. In order to be compliant, which we are responsible for as the city, we have to fix the, the truncated dome panels, and actually, some of a lot of the area in North Hill don't have the current compliant panels. So what it involves is we hire a contractor that goes in and removes the concrete. At times, they'll have to go back several panels from the, where the two sidewalks cross to be able to get the correct slopes, but then they replace those and put the, I always call, they look like the tops of Legos, so the, they're intended for people that are blind to be able to fill them with their stick. So that's what these projects kind of entail. We typically do the ADA project in conjunction when we do the asphalt. We wanted to get the asphalt out the door, and then, as you remember, we did the 2019 asphalt project, and we essentially added to that for the 2020 project, so we didn't have any ADA built in there from a design standpoint, so we have to follow back up with that project. So the general obligation funds is for that, and that's why I prefer back to the Seal Coat prod, or the asphalt project, why some of these monies are tied to other projects, to be able to answer what, what kind of project we could handle adding on to the end of Central. So that was a lot of speech for not a lot of, is there any questions on that?
Anybody have any questions for Nick?
I didn't give you an estimate on the second. The 2020 is, is a, is a larger project, that's $320,000 estimated.
Do you know how far we are with the compliance on the ADA stuff, and we've been kind of trucking along, but it's a?
So the best thing that we did was create an ADA compliance plan. Overall, we still have a long ways to go, but the biggest thing about doing is getting a plan in place, so that way, when you have the Department of Justice or the Attorney's Office come in, based on a complaint, that, that's how they receive it. You don't have a compliance order or consent order to meet certain ADA standards where they tell you what you're going to spend in ADA compliance. We're definitely taking some big chunks out, but, I mean, we have, we have a lot more work to go, so.
We talked about that a couple of years ago, and it was, what, like 25, 30 years before we were going to be all caught up?
In the bigger aspect of it, we're, we're tackling the cross areas where the, where people would go, but the mainline concrete sidewalk that the property owners are actually in charge of, those need a lot of work. And so that will take some sort of program, you know, initiated by the city in some way to offer a, you know, a carrot or a stick-type alternative to, to get those things corrected. So, and I don't know what that looks like. We probably need to work on something like that, but.
We had one, didn't we?
We did at one point, but I think funding.
Discontinued it about three years ago?
It's been longer than that. It was gone well before I got here.
Okay.
So I, I know that there was some funding dedicated towards a project like that or a program like that. I guess the question is, is how much, and if you guys are interested in doing something like that, so.
Okay. All right. Moving on, number eight, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amendment to ordinance number 3220, an ordinance creating the Sunrise West Planned Unit Development BUD overlay district by removing the Outlot G from the Sunrise West PUD. Eric?
This was following along with the next item, this just removes Outlot G from the Sunrise West PUD so that it could be brought into the Beverly Place PUD. Both of those go hand in hand. This one could occur without the other one, but the other one can't occur without this one.
Okay. And this is a second reading, so we've pretty well kicked it around. Any questions on that from last week, guys? No. Number nine, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of ordinance rezoning Lot 4 of the Swisher subdivision to the Outlot G of the fourth addition to Sunrise West subdivision from R1 single-family residential to R4 multifamily residential with a planned unit development overlay zone, Beverly Place PUD, as allowed by the zoning code of the City of Burlington, Iowa.
This again, rezones the parcel here, Lot 4 Swisher subdivision and Outlot G of the fourth addition to Sunrise to R4, the PUD overlay to allow Beverly Place cooperative living, multifamily living on the site. Does have some additional requirements for increased setbacks, specifically on the west and southern sides, but also on all other sides that are equal or greater than our typical setbacks. Increases if there's a four-story building, landscape buffer on the west and southern sides, and then a sidewalk connection on the south side. Maximum of 80 dwelling units within the property. If this were just rezoned R4 without PUD, it would be, depending on how it was laid out, it would be 110 to 150 units could be in here, so that gives some, I guess, maximum for them. They can't just pack in as much as they want. It's about half of what they could if it weren't in a PUD. And then does have private street connections on the, from Gilbert Street over to the land that is undeveloped, and then Horizon Street down into Dale Street. Future connections would be Gilbert over to Sunrise West, and then coming down Cambridge on that area, and then going north, just depending on how that development will occur. Planning Commission did recommend approval, five to one, with one abstain. Other than that, I don't, there's too much else on that.
This is the second reading. Anybody have any new questions? Go ahead, Linda.
Eric, in order for them to start building or construction, do they have to sell a certain number of the units?
They set a target of 60% pre-sale to do it. I guess on our end, it has to be rezoned, and then they still have to go through the plating process before they can construct as well. So this will come back for, back before you as a preliminary plat, because they are installing public streets, and then a final plat, so there's a few steps, even after, if rezoning is approved, that, before they can start, but their target is 60% pre-sale. That's why they have phases. They're looking to do the light green here first with the roads and the private drive in this phase, and then this kind of light blue, kind of following along pretty quickly. That's a little, I guess, not less quality, but less.
Price point.
Price point, just because there's not underground parking, and then continuing development as they sell, but they're looking, hoping to do these first two phases in all the roads at the beginning.
Did they get the number of units pre-sold that they need?
That I don't know.
Don't know? I've, I've just heard some comments from the public that with the economy, they were worried if they were going to hit the point saying?
I think we had a few callers from people that already had stuff in, and they were, I know they were close on this first building anyway, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number 10, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Connor Avenue right-of-way located north of Core Street, Burlington, Iowa.
I have this map up right now, but again, just off of Core Street and Des Moines, Des Moines Avenue.
It's the Carly.
Carly Ellison owns all the property around it. It was just kind of an oversight that they had ownership, but it hasn't been formally vacated, so looking to do that now.
Unless there's any objections, I would mark this one for a third and final to waive it.
Good with that.
Okay. All right. Number 11, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of the ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 161 Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
This is updating the language just regards to smoke alarms and carbon dioxide alarms to follow the International Residential Code a little bit closer. Not changing what's required, it's already required under Housing Code, but just making it clear where and if you replace it, what, what you have to do so that there's less uncertainty, I guess, in what the requirements are, and then adding in the language, if we send out a notice to someone that feels an illegal rental, doesn't have a rental permit, and they don't comply within 30 days, either show that it's not a rental or get a rental permit, then their fees could be doubled, so.
Okay. Any questions for Eric on that one? I feel the same about this one as I do the other one. We could waive it. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Waive to the, the final? Okay, so we'll mark that as well. All right. Resolution awarding contract for the 2020 Virginia Avenue-Sycamore Streets Stormwater Improvements. Thank you, Eric, by the way. Nick?
The resolution in front of you would approve awarding contract to Four Seasons Excavating in the amount of $99,524.93. We did a bid letting last week. This project, as you may remember, is the storm sewer issues that we have kind of off the end of Virginia, and then Sycamore is kind of the corner up here in the North Hill area. We have a storm sewer line that is, the corner has kind of broken open, and it's got some erosion. The engineer's estimate on the project is $85,900, so it's a little bit more, but the other bidders were well above where the, the low bidder was. We've worked with all the, the bidders, we feel comfortable awarding bid to Four Seasons. We will be using the miscellaneous or the sewer mainline funding, some of the same funding that we've used for some of our other problems that we have come up, so I would recommend approval.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this one? No, thank you, Nick. Next one up, resolution awarding contract for the 2020 Senior Center Roof Replacement Project.
This resolution would award contract to Brockway Mechanical in the amount of $62,229.84. This bid was received last week on Tuesday, the same. The engineer's estimate and the number that we have in the budget is $75,000, so it comes well with underneath the, the estimated project. The funding source for this is sales tax. You know, the city manager and I have both spoken to you about some of the concerns with this. It's still a, you know, construction project that, that likely needs to happen, so just wanted to keep you aware of that, but other than that, I would recommend approval.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? No, seeing none. Next up, resolution approving liens for non-payment pursuant to Chapters 99, 100, and 106 in the Burlington Municipal Code.
So this is something that we do once a year now. The Exhibit A shows you the properties that haven't paid. Most of them are stormwater fees, so again, this is something fairly new when we implemented the stormwater fee. What difference of these properties is they don't, they're not connected to the water. They don't have city water for some reason. So a lot of people, if there's non-payment, their water gets shut off, they go pay their bill, and, you know, they keep moving on. These, we don't have anything to shut off. We don't have anything to take away from them. So the way we get them to pay is we assess it to their property taxes, and then, once they pay their property taxes, this will be on there, and then we'll get our funds that way. So the good news is, this total is $2,200. Last year, it was almost $9,000. So more people are paying it, they're understanding that it's part of a, you know, the ordinance that we put into place, so if anybody has any questions. Again, we only do this once a year, and that will file it with the Des Moines County Treasurer to add these amounts, and, and you can see, a lot of them are fairly small, but for some reason, they're just not paying the quarterly bill they're getting from the waterworks, so.
Okay. Any questions for Stephanie Gang? No.
These aren't all in city, sorry, they're all on city limits?
Yes, yeah, we, yeah, that's why. It's just for some reason or another, they.
They're not using city water?
Well, it depends. I mean, we, you have to look at the addresses. Yeah, some of them might not have water at the location, but we are still accessing the stormwater fee. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 15, resolution approving Housing Sustainability Grant Administration Plan 2020.
This is related to the application for CDBG funds, just if awarded funds, it lays out the compliance procedures for how we use those CDBG funds from nondiscrimination to processes and management documentation. So it just lays out, making sure we're meeting the, all the IEDA and CDBG guidelines if we're awarded funds, but they need that shown in the minutes for approval, that's why it's on the regular agenda.
Okay, sounds good. Is anybody a question on that? No. Thank you. Eric, proposed consent agenda for May 18th is, first one is resolution approving maintenance and operation of public infrastructure associated with the indoor recreational facility. Nick?
The resolution in front of you would, would accept this. The resolution in front of you would accept this piece of sewer line, which is what the highlighted section is. There is a, there's a roadway there now. When the indoor rec facility built, they installed sewer main, and they installed another manhole that connected into, into what was ours. So between manhole thirty-six E, or thirty-six E eleven, and then forty-eight E eleven is what the indoor rec facility had installed. They did have an issue, and they realized it at the manhole prior to us accepting. They did request that. They had a backup in their facility. That has been corrected. We've inspected and meets the standards that we would want for acceptance. So it does allow for some connectivity further to the north. I don't know how much flow they would have, but I guess that's the reason for having installed it, is it allows for a little more access. So I would approve, I would recommend approval.
Okay. Questions, Gang? No. Next up, resolution to install stop signs at intersection Seventh Street and Walnut Street.
We've had three requests for a stop sign installation at this intersection. The resolution in front of you would install two stop signs for north and southbound traffic. When, when staff receives requests for stop sign installation, we go through a engineering process for warranty or figuring out whether or not the intersection is deemed necessary of some sort of control. Site distance, number of accidents, the number of cars per day and speed are all factors, along with adjoining to, you know, other arterial or collector-type roadways. These are both collector roadways. However, the site distance in the area, there is a tree that is fairly full, and it causes some site distance issue when traveling southbound. And there has been several accidents in that intersection in the last couple of years. So it trips the warranty factor for us. So we, I think the original request was a four-way stop. We don't think that that is necessary. So that's the reason why you see a two-way stop sign or a...
If we still have issues, we can always add two more. Okay.
It's just, it's just due Easter grimes on Walnut.
Okay. Any questions, Gang? No. Number three, resolution approving an agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on the seven-hundred block of Court Street.
Actually, this resolution is for an installation of a mid-block streetlight. The gentleman, I had emailed him back. He had corresponded with Kathleen and I via email. I had responded to him, and he sent an email prior to me coming up here that he wanted the item removed from the work session. I didn't get that out in time between when I received it and this meeting. I did rec, did say that I would not recommend installation of it, because it's another mid-block light. There is a large tree in his front yard. I also gave him the alternative of Alliant Energies. They have the floodlight system that you can put in, that they will maintain, and you'd pay a monthly fee. So he was okay with that, and that was his reason or request for it being removed. So I end up talking about it to anybody, but I just wanted to...
Okay, so that'll come off with consent for next week. Okay. Number four, resolution approving purchase of type-one ambulance for the Burlington Fire Department Chief Trexel.
Good evening.
Evening.
It's good to be back. Really, it is now. So I'm just bringing to you a proposal to buy a new ambulance. It's included in next year's budget. So I guess the first thing to realize is, this is paid upon receipt of the ambulance. So takes about a hundred and ten days from when we order an ambulance to when we get it. We have a set of specs that we've been using the last three ambulances. We tweak them a little bit each time. The nice thing is, the, what we're using is available within this purchasing contract. I would call it HGAQ. It's Houston-Galveston Area Council. It's like a, they, they pre-bid a bunch of different things, and ambulances are one. So they have a type-one ambulance that's out there from Lifeline, who we've been buying our ambulances from. So we worked with them to come up with a bid on our ambulance. So it actually came in a little bit less than what we expected it. We've made just some very minor tweaks on the inside of the actual ambulance. I think some of the cabinetry was off from last time, so they fixed that. Otherwise, it'll be the exact same ambulance that we've been getting. It'll include, so not included in that, well, it's included in this price that you see here, but we had to add that, the power cot and the loading system. That adds about forty-one thousand dollars to an ambulance. We did include that in our estimate for this year for an ambulance. Just a couple other things in that memo I just wanted to mention was, I don't know if you have that there, is we do plan on remounting our ambulances at some point. I don't know if that'll be the very next one. We'll now have four lifelines. We'll have one odd ambulance. I don't know if it'll make sense to replace that one first and then go to the remounting. But we'll save a considerable amount on each new purchase if we do remounting instead of buying a whole new ambulance. So the box, the cabinetry, all that stuff has a lifetime warranty from Lifeline. And so it makes a lot of sense to just replace the Ford or whatever the chassis is at that time. We've been using Fords, but it could be whatever when you do that.
Which, which, which one is this ambulance replacing?
This will, actually, we're gonna, the two thousand and seven, it's not quite the oldest, but it's the one that we have the most issues with. That's the two thousand and seven Chevy Medium Duty. The two thousand and five Medium Duty, that's, we have that set up for bariatric. So we really don't want to just get rid of that unit, even though we don't use it near like what we used to, since we have the power load system and the power cots. So that'll handle a seven-hundred-pound patient. So rarely do we need anything more than that. There are a few times when the, it might be rough terrain, or the patients, just because of their size, they don't really fit on those cots, and we'll still use the bariatric setup, but not like we used to. Hardly ever recall that out. So we'll replace the two thousand and seven. As you can see, there, we're, we're down to one rig with less than a hundred thousand miles on it. So we do put a lot of miles on our ambulances, so.
We've only had that about a year and a half, haven't we?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the one that's downtown. But by and large, the Ford, the F four fifty chassis have been way more reliable. We spend a lot less money maintaining those than we did those medium-duty rigs. So been very happy, looking, take them in locally for service versus taking a, an ambulance up to the Quad Cities or having it taken over to Peoria or Springfield for repair. So I think that's all I had to say. Any questions about that?
Okay, so this was in the budget for...
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, Gang? Thank you.
Thanks.
Good to see you, Chief.
Good to see you.
Number five, resolution approving the amended agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa and the Burlington-West Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce for hotel motel tax distribution.
Is Chelsea, Chelsea, are you, do you happen to have, be on the line?
Yep, I'm here.
All right. So we had a request come in from the Convention Visitors Bureau, and maybe, did you want to go over what, what your thoughts were prior to reviewing the resolution?
Sure, I can just give a little bit of background information for everybody. So as you know, COVID has caused a huge strain on the travel and tourism industry, and, you know, travel's virtually kind of out of hand still right now, and with the CDB budget being mainly comprised of hotel motel tax receipts, it's caused us to take a real hard look at the CDB budget and kind of how we're going to be able to do forward. So everything is still kind of a prediction right now, since we don't know when travel will be able to resume, but we are predicting about a forty-five percent reduction in total income, predicting that the Burlington hotel motel tax receipts could drop from the two hundred and seventy-five thousand that we predicted in two thousand and nineteen down to a hundred and ten thousand. And just as a reminder for all of you, we operate on a January one calendar budget here, so that's kind of where my numbers are coming from. We have taken a hard look at our expenses, and we've been able to cut just shy of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses. We've essentially taken all CDB expenses down to what has been spent so far from January and what we're contracted. And we had a few contracts for for sure distribution and some marketing campaigns that were already signed that we just aren't able to do out of, and so we do need to do for those. So those adjustments are taking the CDB twenty-twenty budget down to a negative of almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So Eric, if you want to go ahead and dance to the next slide. So then that brings us to our request to the council. And so we would be requesting that the hotel motel tax checks that we do receive quarterly right now, looking at those on a every six month or a bi-annual basis, and bringing that up to a minimum of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and setting this in place for now through the end of June thirty, twenty-twenty-one, which is what we have remaining left in our agreement. Jim, what gaps do I need to help fill in there?
That's about it. So this, the city for this year was on pace to bring in nine-hundred and ten thousand. And, and again, as Chelsea mentioned, we operate on a different calendar, fiscal year than what the chamber does. We're July one to June thirty. We had four hundred and sixty thousand come in in the July one to December thirty-one timeframe. We were projected to bring in about four hundred and forty thousand for January through June. The big concern that Chelsea's looking at here is that revenue for that six-month period could very easily be more in the, I guess I'm not exactly sure what you're looking at, Chelsea, but it could be more in the two hundred thousand range instead of the four forty. And that two hundred thousand range would leave them, if it was, as an example, that would leave them with about two hundred times thirty percent, sixty thousand revenue. They can't operate on that. They have gone through with their budget, and what she's showing there, they're looking at, they think that the two payments, not just the, the final two for this fiscal year that we look at, but then the next two, total at a hundred and ten thousand. That's a significant issue for them. We can adjust our contract. The first six months is more doable than what I think the next six months is. This first six months, we can adjust and, and, and make it work, I think, okay. Where we fit for a balance moving forward is probably a little bit more concerning. But I don't know that it's a matter of where it is for not doing this for them. They have made some significant cuts already to get down to what they've presented to us. As they look at what their shortfall is, you're looking at not just a shortfall from this funding stream, but from multiple others, Chelsea, if I'm, if I have that correct, and...
Yeah, that is correct.
And you've already made some significant cuts to what you're looking at operations being. But even with that, you're still showing that hundred and twenty thousand dollar shortfall if you only get what you're projecting at, that hundred and ten thousand over the course of this calendar year. I, you don't have the, I mean, they're a partner for marketing a community and making sure that they're able to be viable long-term. As we had a conversation with the, the chamber, I, I felt that the request to try to make, help them to keep, maintain a level of funding and operations was, was pretty critical for us as a community, not just for this year, but having an organization that can market us well into the future.
I agree.
The resolution that is in front of you would amend the contract language so that if in a given, those given six-month increments, the January one to June thirtieth, or the July one to December thirty-first timeframes, the, the allocation formula, it's, what's in the resolution talks about thirty percent of revenues up to seven hundred thousand, and then forty percent over seven hundred thousand, or did I just get that flipped? I can't remember, Chelsea. But regardless, if the, if the revenues are below about three hundred and sixty thousand, they're not going to get a hundred and ten thousand from their percentage. What we're, what this resolution would say is, if your revenues are lower than that amount, or what, the city's revenues are lower than that amount, will hold them harmless to the hundred and ten thousand floor per six months. And that still doesn't get them to a balanced budget, but it's pretty close. It was about ten thousand off.
Right.
In, you know, kind of the, the hope, I mean, this first six months is going to be the worst for hotel motel tax revenue. The next six months is going to be, I think, projections would show that it's going to be pretty bad, too. And, I mean, that's where, when, when we had talked with some of the hotels, they're looking at our next fiscal year being about twenty percent down. If we're twenty percent down, it's not going to be that far off from the hundred and ten thousand per six-month period. I don't think it's going to be a huge amount. If it's off more than that, this gives them a floor, and I think they need it.
Okay.
One of the things that we can do to make this first six months work, I'm looking at, you know, we, one of the transfers we do out of hotel motel tax is to the general fund to support recreational programming. We transfer a hundred and eighty thousand a year. We've already made the first half transfer of ninety thousand, and my goal would be not to do the second half transfer of ninety thousand. That'll at least help the, the hotel motel tax fund moving into next year. The balance in the general fund, all things being equal, should be okay. We have a couple of things that we don't know where we sit on general fund. For one, property taxes, we're about two hundred thousand dollars behind collections. And, and I think that's largely due to the extension that was given for no penalties. That money, we would assume will come in. It's just more delayed than typical.
Jim, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. I just, you're going through a lot.
Yeah, some people really want to cut me off.
So I want to make sure. If you don't make that transfer, what's, what's, impact does that have on the expenditures coming out of that fund?
So if we don't make that transfer, that provides more funds in hotel motel tax. It should, it'll help to make sure that we cover that, this, this floor amount that we're doing, putting into a modified agreement if revenues are really low. As far as this fiscal year goes, I'm not concerned about where the hotel motel tax is going to end up. I think that we can make it through this, this fiscal year. Depending on how bad this fiscal year is, though, and how we rebound, I think that we might be in a world of hurt next fiscal year. But there are so many variables that are up in the air right now. I don't even know what to give for a level of priorities.
Any idea?
I, this, though, specifically, funding for them, I think is important.
Any idea what the variance is going to be between what they would have gotten and what the hundred and ten thousand dollar floor looks like?
That's a crapshoot. If, if it's twenty percent revenue reduction from the current year, or from where we were headed towards this year to what we actually get next year, they're going to be right about, they would be right about that two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand that they would get. So this wouldn't make much of a difference at all. If it's significantly worse is where this has given them a floor. And it may be significantly worse. As you see, they're showing a fifty, fifty-six percent for this calendar year. And, I mean, they're looking at three months just as almost a total wipe. But the rest of it, they're still looking at plus twenty percent. We can accommodate it, again, and I think we need to as a partner, but I don't think that we should lose track of, we may have some potential issues on the backside as we go into next year.
That's my concern, is what, whatever we do for them is going to, the, the cost is going to be...
The cost will be likely in what, we're going, yeah, it's going to be future projects.
Yeah.
But I don't want to, this is, and when, when it comes to the hotel motel tax, this is the driver of making that fund be successful, is making sure that they're doing the marketing efforts, and we can't let that fall through the cracks.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Thank you, Jim.
Chelsea, she's still there?
Oh, thanks, Chelsea. I think we're, we're done. She's still there.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate you.
Six, we'll set public hearing date, June first, twenty-twenty, consideration of plans specifications for the twenty-twenty Fifth Street and Valley Street parking lot projects. We've got that to look forward to. Discussion item... Discussion items, signs on the riverfront.
So, the police chief and I spoke and the one major change from the conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago was the skateboarding. It appears that some of the problem isn't just skateboarding, it also is BMX bikes that are grinding on our concrete. There is some damages down there. I just hesitate to put a bunch of signage down there after the police chief and I spoke. There isn't a lot of enforceability on some of the stuff. If you put up, just put up signs, he's right out there. So I removed that from this signage, it could be added back in, but I wanted to give you an idea of where and what I thought the signs would look like. We currently have three signs at the entrances to the riverfront on Jefferson Valley and then Washington Street. We would double side, that is kind of small on that image. That sign would be pretty sizable, I mean, we have, those are probably four or five foot wide signs. They would just, we would just tack it on the bottom of that signage there and it would simply say, you know, some, to the degree of not being on the flood wall and, you know, thanks for your consideration.
Okay.
If that, if that makes sense. And then if you hit the next slide, I can show you, that was kind of my thought process on locations, the three entrances and then also having something on kind of a, we would have to install some sort of a small post with the sign there that kind of gives a general idea as you enter that area, the thought process, so.
Nick, is it possible on that sign to have the words flood and wall together instead of wrapping?
Oh, yeah, that was me in text, putting it there. So they'll have to transfer, it was me in Word document versus our, we have a program for it, so.
Yep, does anybody have any thoughts on that, questions?
Chief, did you have anything to add to that?
Chief?
Nick had talked about the enforceability of the skateboarding down there. There's nothing in the code that would allow us to cite somebody for skateboarding down there, grinding on the edges with that and the BMX bikes. I can see it from my office almost daily, them riding around down there doing that. There's nothing, unless we create an ordinance that would not allow it down there. And I come up with some solutions more preventative than enforcement for down there to put things on the curbing down there that would prevent them from grinding on the curbs that are that are higher. And I sent Nick some photos of that and I think he may have forwarded those to you that I went down there and observed, but that's where the damage is, it's, you can see it now, there's just not concrete broken off yet, but I'm assuming it will happen as it continues to happen with grinding down there. But there's, I think, ways that we can deter them versus taking enforcement action, creating an ordinance for more enforcement down there.
Okay, sounds good.
Good to do.
Thank you, Chief. All right, go ahead, Nick. Does anybody have any questions on this, then?
So is that something you want me to just carry out? I don't necessarily need counsel irises for it, but I wanted it because I didn't know where we were.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to have something on there that says, hey, you can't, you can't sit on, or walk on flood wall.
Okay.
So.
We'll get it done.
Yeah. And I like the fact that matches the sign, so it works.
Well, and you're also talking about adding the devices that Chief just mentioned.
That would be something we would look at at a different time, but we can get that done.
I mean, I'm sure they're pretty subtle, right? Inexpensive-ish?
They are not, they are not cheap.
Well, once.
And so we've talked about that internally, about the, essentially there, you tap them into the surface of the concrete so the grinding can't happen. We put them in the areas where they're grinding, they will move.
To another area.
We want, you want to get something that's tasteful and I've also seen ones that are, can be kind of harsh when you, when you sit on it and you like rub your hand or your, you know, you sit on it, it can be kind of sharp, I guess. So there are ones that are a little bit.
Sit on the wall.
Yeah.
Just go ahead.
Not those. Seat walls, seat walls.
It's a seat wall.
Yeah, I got you.
I mean, it's designed.
Clarify the wall, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can do that.
Let's, let's at least look into it, see what the cost would be, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay. All right, is, we have on our future discussion items, again, Cascade Bridge, parking passes, friends of Cascade. Is there any other discussion items staff would like to bring forward that wasn't on the agenda? Any discussion items? Jim, come on up.
Just a couple of things, one, radio.
Oh, that's Council Talk, I can do it.
I got it. Sound good?
All right, question was asked about TEMA project. Speaking with Eric, we, we have not received anything from that. But one of the things that they're still working through, they have to have some clearance from SHPO for environmental review on the project and they have not gotten any approval back yet. It's not that they haven't been, haven't tried. And if you think about the way our offices are, any office in Des Moines is worse than what we are in terms of having folks who are in the office working. And so I think that's been part of the delay that they've had, but they knew that it was at least a six-week delay to get that process done anyway. And they can't do any other action until they've gotten that approval.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up because we've had several ask, so thank you.
And then just as we're moving forward, we've had a couple of things with, as things have opened up, we're, we don't know where we're at on opening things up, but we, a couple of the things that we have done, parking enforcement through May fifteen in the downtown area and allowing a free container through May fifteen. My recommendation would be to allow those two items to expire at that May fifteen timeline as we've seen things start to open up. Then in terms of other things, I don't know what our timeframe is for opening facilities, but my impression would be that we'll start to see that June first for some of our facilities, making sure that, for one thing, an example, we've got a guard down at the counter at the clerk's office on second floor, making sure that we've done some of those steps, too, as part of that process of transitioning as things move to open. One of the things that's probably the hardest, though, is going to be with rec programs. We, just as we've had conversations with our staff, as they've looked at what they're hearing from other places around the state, we're, people aren't talking, talking with this plan about when they're opening yet. They don't have it. Mason City actually does have a plan, they're not opening. None of their rec programs are going to be there this summer. And my suspicion is they're not the only community that that's going to be the case with. We've got folks who want to be able to open as soon as we can and we will work towards that with things, but we're really dependent on seeing where the announcements come from the state and and how do we do this in a way that we are not the leading edge of things.
But we're also not lagging.
But we're also not lagging, so we do want to try to make sure that that happens. It's just, this is unknown territory and we'll try to do our best when it comes to those, comes to that.
Okay.
One program area that I do know that we have plans on, you've taken a lot of reservations for the summer program. I want to talk about what your summer program is so that you, on the spot, you can do that, can't you? Why don't you come up and do that?
This is your try.
Welcome to the show, Jessica, welcome to the show.
You can introduce yourself to the council.
I'm Jessica Gerling. We have about thirty reservations currently for our summer camp program.
What do you do here?
Oh, I'm the project coordinator for the Development and Parks Department. We have about thirty reservations currently for summer camp, so we are filling up. Typically, we would see about fifty, but we haven't done a lot of marketing in that way because we didn't know where we were going to stand on that right now. So Recreation Manager Brad is closely monitoring other programs in the area to find out what they're doing. Nobody wants to make the first call to say that we're canceling completely or we're marketing to be at full capacity either, so. We're kind of at a wait and see period. I hope I'm not over speaking, but. Otherwise, programming is is going to change this year just because typically our summer camp looks like we go to the movies, we go to the pool, we go to the other, other areas in the communities, the library. So it's going to be counselor-dependent on programming and being more creative, possibly. We have looked at options with shelters, possibly having shelters, all of the rooms there to be able to to handle any kind of restrictions with numbers to keep kids separated in groups of ten, if that's a need. And then also if we were needing masks for kids, I don't know if that's going to be a potential item as well.
That's what that's convention, possibly having rotations, same with pool, whether we have stagger times opening. A lot of it's just, we don't know.
Sure. Has the CDC provided any guidance as to how to handle these kinds of things yet?
CDC's guidance would have us be closed all summer. So where things stand right now, we haven't got any guidance that would allow for things to be open. And it would match, really, the statements that came out of the press conference from the, from the president where he talked about opening things back up in order to do testing. And that process is not what we're functioning under as things start, are opening up realistically. We're not, no one's operating under that structure. And and I don't know where we're going to be, but the guidance that we've gotten right now is not a guidance that's going to allow us to see things open up. Unfortunately, but I, I think that everyone's trying to figure out a way to make it move forward anyway, if at all possible, but it has to be done in a way that we don't open ourselves up for liability, too.
That's true. All right.
I had a potential topic.
Okay. Yeah, what we'll do is we'll do future discussion items, then we'll go back through and do a council wrap-up, so go ahead, Linda.
All right. This idea came from Della Schmidt, who said there's a local physician in the area that said he comes and does a twenty-minute presentation on COVID, how to be safe, stay safe, learn about it. Some people said maybe this wasn't an agenda item for a work session, but I thought, we have a lot of questions about it, what is safe, what are the best practices? I thought it couldn't hurt, so throwing that out there for a future topic.
Okay. Anything else for future topics of discussion? No? Wrap-up, Eric, anything? Chief out there in the hallway, anything? While you're coming to the mic, let me commend the police force on acting on something I asked you to check out. There was a video on Facebook of a couple youths going after another youth and you guys got right on it and handled it, thank you.
Yeah, no troubles, no trouble, that's what we do. This week is National Police Week. It's all week, the tenth through the sixteenth. Usually they have a national recognition in Washington DC at the Police Memorial. They're going to do something a little bit different there, I think, virtually. So the plans have kind of changed this year where we see a lot of law enforcement that are sent to Washington DC in memory of the officers that have fallen throughout the past year and their names are put on the memorial wall out there. So that'll be a little bit different, but just, this is National Police Week and it'll culminate in that. And we appreciate our community and we feel the appreciation from our community throughout the year, so it really doesn't change a whole lot for us this week, but just, it is nationally recognized this week, just wanted to announce that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Eric said no, fire chief, nothing, Jessica, anything? Nick, Stephanie? All right, Bill?
Just congratulations to the police on National Police Week and stay safe.
Robert?
Concessions went really well at the V Stadium, we went out there and there was, they had a line of cars. They said we had to wait longer than anybody else because we were one of the last ones and it took them, you know, ten, fifteen minutes or whatever to finish up what they were doing, but they, they were helping us up with some notches and some other stuff for waiting, so they were gracious about that. But if you guys have an opportunity to go out, if they do it again, it was a lot of fun and kind of missed that ballpark food. Did anybody go to the farmer's market? So I have no feedback on the farmer's market, I don't know how it went. If anybody went, wants to drop me a note?
I heard it went well, that it was a success.
All right, that's all I have.
Matt? I don't have a whole lot, I did want to throw out a statistic that I heard the other day on the White House call was the Small Business Association in the last three weeks has given out more loans to small businesses than they have in the last thirty years, which I thought was pretty interesting, so.
Okay, Linda?
For once, I don't have anything.
All right. I don't have anything beyond giving the congrats to the PD. They did have a request, Jim, maybe we could look at it, someone would like us to read. May is the motorcycle month as a proclamation, so if you could have, see if we've done something like that in the past. Because they are out there on bikes and they're getting out there, just make sure to look both ways. The governor's going to announce tomorrow some, some extensions and also some, some other changes to her, to her proclamation, so just know that we're working through it with you. If you see something that comes up, you can definitely contact one of the council members or the city staff if you have a question. I had someone this last Friday said, called me and said, well, I was told I have to open my business Friday. And no, you don't have to open your business Friday, you have the option to open it last Friday if you were a retailer. So just, we understand you have questions, we have the same thing, so please contact us, we'll do what we can to help you. That's it, we're out of here, thank you, everybody.